And for prior issues of the building department.
In a second please.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the uh the application twenty five sixteen and uh does it does anyone have uh any other questions or comments? Go ahead with the vote on this thing. All in favor of the motion, yes. Tucker Reddick, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed nay. Application twenty five sixteen, so congratulations. But before you leave, I'd like to get each of your names. We normally, I I forgot to I cut it a little short, but we need speakers to identify themselves for the record, so we need your name and address.
Kevin West, Prescott Construction Management, sixty nine Hopbrook Road, Simsbury, Connecticut.
Kevin Lozic, Prescott Construction Management, twelve Winter Set Lane, Simsbury.
Really?
Ben Lozic, Ensign Bickford, Aerospace and Defense, nine five one, Hot Meadow Street.
You have the same last name?
Yeah.
We do. Yeah, I'm his I'm his son. I worked for Prescott Construction for about ten years.
In January.
Yeah, I stole.
Sharon hired me, Ensign Bickford.
Oh, really?
They stole them away from us.
And Sharon, what was your name?
Sharon Lekandra. And I'm Ensign Victor at Aerospace, and I'm at twenty six four Shearlands.
Really? Great. Well, thank you all for coming out tonight. You did a great job. It was very clear what you wanted to do and we appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah. Good luck on your ID. Have a good night.
Two.
You did the same.
Thank you.
Good evening.
To get approved of the other projects.
So the next order of business tonight is the second public hearing. I'll have it out here in a minute. Oh, here we go. Tony, why don't you give notice for this moment here?
Application ZC number twenty five dash twenty of the Gerard Brothers Corporation owner, Tom Roy, applicant. For a special exception pursuant to section four point five and section twelve of the Simsbury zoning regulations to permit a school at two Farms Village Road, necessaries map F eleven block one four eight lot zero one nine, Simsbury, Connecticut, zero six zero seven zero zone P O.
Thank you. George, where are you?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I've got just a just a couple of slides for you to frame.
Marcus, no.
For the record, um, we probably should have identified as applicant Tom Roy, Director of Public Works, town of Simsbury. Uh, so this is a a special exception on behalf of of the town of Simsbury really and the school district, both the Board of Selectmen and the Simsbury School District. It is a special exception to permit a school in the professional office zone. So a school is listed as a special exception in, uh, in fact, in in most of our zoning districts, if not all of our zoning. So anytime we deal with a school issue, it's a special exception. The property is located at two Farms Village Road. The town and the school district have that property under contract. It's an existing uh two-story with a basement, uh, include the basement uh square footage, it's a little over six thousand square feet. The plan is to renovate the existing structure, all three stories, by the school district for their special education program. That will include small offices, small classrooms, activity space. The plan to 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 house or to accommodate up to twenty five students over a phased period of time. There are no exterior site changes prepared. There's an existing parking lot, um, existing access point, so there's no there's no plans for uh for for kind of outside work, just just to reorient you to to two Farms Village. This is property that is directly abutting Simsbury High School, so there are some accommodations and some, um, you know, relationships that that make sense there. It's it's right next to become school district property, right? Um, it is the former offices of of Gerard Brothers Construction Company. There is an existing uh site plan on on file. I just wanted to show it to you. This is the site plan. There's no changes to it. Uh, this 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 particular use generates about twenty five parking spaces. I think there's thirty one in total there, so there's not, um, there's there area for drop off, there's handicap spaces there already, so uh it meets the conditions of 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 our zoning regulations.
George, just to be clear, there's any proposed changes to that site plan or the existing site plan is gonna be essentially continued except for the
If there are changes to the site plan that there's or that that, you know, that rise to the the level of significance as described in the in the in the zoning regulations, they would come back to this body for review. Yes, for sure. Step in the staff report, we we uh uh just like Brittany reviewed the the special exceptional criteria for the EBIT application, we kind of walked through remind you just what what those items are. Yeah, it it's our staff's finding that 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 these regulations and these criteria has been substantially satisfied. That that corridor is a is a mixed-use corridor, there's lots of kind of commercial structures in the and the relationship between this location and 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 the high school makes a lot of sense to us. So from a clear land use perspective, uh, it 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 meets that criteria and 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 we staff offers really no objection to the application.
Question, the site plan, is there going to be any path directly?
So there exists one. So there is a there's a there's a a a multi-purpose path already that that goes in front of the property on the north side.
So you don't have to go out on the road and back in?
No, they can uh walk right. In fact, you I might show it to you. It it kind of runs right along here.
Ties down.
So yeah, it 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 there there's a path that exists already.
So if there were staff who wanted to walk over from the high school to go to that building, it's easy.
Quite simple.
Take a look.
I know that um kind of on the sly, they would allow certain kids who didn't get parking permits to park there. My daughter got one of them. So um, yeah, I think that's a regular, that's a regularly has travel path.
It's how the crew kids get to the boat house.
Yeah.
Well, I guess that kind of begs the question, will that be permitted? Well, I mean, we don't really know that really.
No, that was that was that was not, that was not an official thing. That was just a
She said it was on the slide.
It would be taken up by staff?
Yeah.
On the slide, yes.
Yes.
Her exact words. So
Yeah, is there gonna be much demolition within the building to create the
So so I I I think included in in the plan set, uh, there is, um, yeah, there's significant renovations planned to, uh, you know, kind of build out the space that's needed. And that includes, you know, larger activity spaces and and smaller classrooms. So that build out is it's 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 fairly significant build out.
Yeah, I mean, they went over it at um Board of Education.
Oh, okay.
And it there needs to be some um ADA accommodations, things like that. So yeah, it's gonna be significant.
That was in the material we had.
Yep.
I'm pre- I'm pretty sure we attached it. Yeah, we did.
Um, now, just going back to the path, the was that a walking path, George, or is that a concrete path or what path here?
So that's there is so there is a
Is that a sidewalk?
Right, then the forefront of the picture, yes.
Yeah. Yes, so so actually, actually you can see it right here.
That's where you were pointing.
Yeah. It's a sidewalk.
Yeah, so that but and that runs along this stretch of
Oh.
It's a sidewalk.
So there's a sidewalk on Farms Village Road.
Farm Village.
Yep, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, that runs between that place and the high school.
The whole way, that's all, yeah. Yeah, it's just a regular sidewalk. It goes across the whole front of the, yeah.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
And uh, I I only saw one driveway out to uh, you know, to a
So there is there is all there is one access point. Yes, correct. That and that that point exists today.
Yes, there's a single access. And that's expected to be su- sufficient for whatever changes are associated with twenty five students.
It it is. It 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 is, yeah.
Okay.
What's the abutting property again? The what's that like building that I'm seeing that's tucked back behind that little notch? Yeah.
So here? That's a residential property. That's a residential property, yeah.
Residential property, yeah.
It is, yeah, I I
The schedule yet for completion of the renovations, do you know?
So there, um so so the the contract really includes two phases, if I recall, and there is there is some, um there's construction going on today by on behalf of the owner prior to to closing. So I think there's the owner's doing some stuff today, and once the town takes um takes ownership of it, it'll be additional, uh, the full build out. But I I mean, I my 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 understanding is that the school district wants to get in there as soon as as possible.
The school?
Yeah, and hope to get in there this fall.
Oh, wow. Okay, so then I guess that that I'll ask it anyway, but so the budget for this purchase and renovation has already been approved, like that's
It's been approved by the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance and the, yes.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I personally have my own concerns about like the viability of that as a s- that whole building and everything as a school, but I think in terms of like the things that you outlined for creating a uh special exception, like in terms of what's abutting it, what's around it, whether it's like a major impact to the area, whether the utilities can can support it, that all seems to be in line with doing it. So, um, I mean, I would be inclined to be favorable to the special exception.
Well, we're obligated to use those benchmarks.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So
For our decision, right.
Those being the benchmarks and not looking at the fact that it's probably gonna, you know, budgetarily cost a lot of money, et cetera, et cetera. That's not our situation right now.
It tends to be outside of your purview.
Yeah, that's outside of our purview. So I'm just saying like we're meeting, I think, you know, it it's yeah, I think we're meeting the those requirements, so.
Yeah, on the previous slide, I think you had them.
Yeah, yeah, and I think they this site meets those requirements, yeah.
Yeah.
May I may I comment on that on that? Just, um and this is again outside of our pur- purview also, but since we're already outside. Um, as, um, you know, living in the world of special education as I have for the last twenty years or so, um, this sort of facility is so needed, so needed.
Yeah, no, I'm not. I wasn't saying it wasn't.
I I know you weren't, and I know that there will be concerns about costs, et cetera, but in the long run, it's better for our students and better for our pockets.
In my world of experience.
Yeah, just making sure you have the right facility for people, um.
Correct. That yes.
Any other comments before we move on to public hearing?
Well, it's my understanding other towns will be able to use it and therefore generate revenue to Simsbury.
Public hearings?
Cuts down on our out placements too.
Type of that.
What was it you said? Tucker, I didn't get it.
Can potentially cuts down on out placements again, but I I
That's
I don't want to get too into it because I know it's it's totally out of our purview.
Yes.
No. None of that has to do with the special exception.
I know, I know, not at all.
Okay, now is is anybody else in the room who wants to make a comment during public uh public hearing?
I think, uh, as a as a citizen, not as a selectman. Um, the the entryway
Just state your name if you want.
Oh, sorry. I heard it's really intense here, I don't remember. Um, the light, the light, were we doing anything with the light? Because it's not really on the intersection. It's kind of set back a little bit, so it's not really on that intersection. And in the morning, it's a lot of traffic getting in and out of that area. Is there any consideration being placed as far as timing that light so that you can actually access it? Because that's usually blocked by cars in the morning. Or maybe the time schedule is different, so it wouldn't be affected, but just as a consideration.
Yeah, it you know, it we we've had that discussion with um the Director of Public Works and the Police Chief. And um they they've identified that that it is a little bit of an awkward location, but they think that, um I I think that that area can accommodate it. I do think in the future, they may also look about true inter parcel access down the road
Yes, true.
Yeah.
in in the case that that doesn't work. But right now, uh, you know, it kind of meets the standard. It's got it, you know, it it it's it's permitted entrance. It's kind of an equivalent use that to to a six thousand square foot office, so.
Well, to Curtis's point, maybe they can stagger the times that are needed for this building and that they're after the times for the high school, at least in the meantime.
I- i- in general, people just need to put their kids on the bus, honestly.
No one does.
I know, but start putting your kids on a bus. It's good for it builds character. It's good for them and it cuts down on traffic.
It's like, yo.
Good luck with that.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none. I'll ask if there's any member who has uh inclination to motion for approval of the application. I'm ready to close the hearing, close the hearing.
I would close the public hearing, sir. I'll move to close the public hearing.
Excuse me.
I have a second.
Thank you, you have a second. We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. Hearing none, the application's approved unanimously.
No, that was
So uh, yeah, the public hearing is closed based on unanimous vote. And now we'll move along to deciding the question.
I'll read the draft. I said I'll read it.
I am volunteer.
The hand. How about if you read the
I haven't read one in a while. All right, um, I move that the Simsbury Zoning Commission approves application ZC number twenty five dash twenty of the Gerard Brothers Corporation owner, Tom Roy, town of Simsbury applicant, for special exception pursuant to section four point five and section twelve of the Simsbury zoning regulations to permit a school at two Farms Village Road based on the following finding. The special education criteria set forth in section twelve of the zoning regulations have been substantially satisfied as addressed in the staff report. And the special exception certificate shall be filed with the town clerk prior to the issuance of a building's permit. I will second that.
Thank thank you. So we have a motion and a second to approve the uh application twenty five dash thirty. If there's no other questions or discussion, we'll go ahead with the vote. All in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. Uh, the the application twenty five dash twenty is passing unanimous. Thank you. Our next order of business is to do with the we're done with the public hearings. We're on to uh three applications that we've received that have to do with sign
Three sign applications. The first, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, is on behalf of the Nest Schools, which is down, um down down Hot Meadow. Seen the site plan certainly, and they were in front of you last month, um, and the applicant wasn't available, uh, wasn't able to be here. And the design review board had asked them to go back and look at, um the colors associated with the sign. So they're back and have satisfied uh tho- those th- those reviews. So the request is for a freestanding sign. I'll show you that in in just a moment, and and a wall sign. And they meet the requirements on 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 size, and you can see the freestanding sign will be up the kind of inter parcel access road that leads to Aspen Green, which is back here, not in this this view, but and then the the freest uh the the wall sign will be in this location. So just to remind you what the um kind of architectural collect for the approved architectural plans. And the original submission was uh this, uh this sign that had kind of, uh, you know, browns and tans and a little bit more earth tones. The design review suggested and recommended that that the applicant consider uh a kind of a blue white or blue gray color scheme that was more in line with the architecture, and the applicant uh certainly agreed to do that and and resubmitted. And then, um, the wall sign for the Nest School also matches kind of the 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 blues and the colors, and so that's what it is. So you 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 do now have a recommendation from your design review board to recommend approval. The the wall sign as submitted and the freestanding sign as revised.
So the only revision has to do with the color of the paint.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And you do have an an applicant.
They just took D R V's uh changes.
They did. They they did. You do have an applicant here as well.
Okay, awesome.
That's great.
Changed it. They changed it. They as as requested, yeah.
I don't, yeah, I think that's a
It's good to
Spent a long time on this one.
Yeah, I think the only reason we waited was because we wanted to make sure that you know, you know, you agreed and you didn't want to just do it, but I don't think we had any issues other than that.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Does anybody feel motivated to read the
I'll do it.
Draft motion?
Uh, I
Thank you.
I move that the Simsbury Zoning Commission approves application ZC twenty five dash uh fifteen of Jeremy Wecott of Arnco Sign Co. Incorporated, applicant Fortech N L L C owner. For a site plan amendment to construct one wall sign and one freestanding sign for the Nest School at thirty Hot Meadow Street, the project shall be developed in substantial performance with the sign plan as submitted by Atlas dated six ten twenty five, revised eight twenty 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 five.
Thank you. A second please.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the application twenty five fifteen. If there's no further questions or comments, we'll go ahead with the vote. All in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. Uh, application twenty five fifteen is approved as as submitted and uh unanimously voted approved.
Thank you.
So there we go.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice work on the color selection.
I like the little birds in the nest. It's very
You know.
Well done.
You too. I'll I can take the next one if you want me to just keep moving on. One more side.
Sure, definitely. So this is for uh the Preslet Two Cooper Avenue, um Matt Haskell on behalf of Art Effects to permit a plus or minus seventeen square foot wall sign uh for the Performance Lab. The wall sign will be in the application. This is Hot Meadow, so it's facing Hot Meadow.
So the the small commercial structure to the right, if you're staring at at Hartford North.
Yep. Here is a rendering of it. Uh, the design review board provided a positive referral.
Yeah, is this residential or commercial?
So so in 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 front of Hartford Sa- Hartford North, Hartford North, uh, there is, um if you if you if you're looking at the property, to the left is is the new Goddard School.
Nope.
Right? And to the right is a smaller commercial building. I think it's eight thousand square feet with two stories, and I think this is the first business to go in there.
I was gonna gonna ask because it's been vacant and now we have, okay.
A little bit, yes, yeah.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Sure.
Well, it hasn't been this vacant as long as the other buildings have been. Yeah, right. Well, anyway.
Okay, well, but the point is that's the commercial building.
Yes, correct, right.
But that have that area where those two buildings sit is zones that can have residential on the second floor and commercial on the first floor.
It was an excuse, no?
Yeah, right, the the individual buildings. Okay. Any other comments, questions? Um, anybody would like to read the draft motion to approve this application?
I'll do it.
Thank you.
Um, I move that the zoning commission approves application ZC number twenty five dash twenty one of S L Simsbury L L C owner Matt Haskell on behalf of Art Effects applicant for a permit to install a a seventeen square foot wall sign for the Performance Lab located at two Cooper Avenue, AKA two fifty Hot Meadow Street, subject to the sign plan titled Performance Lab dated six four twenty five, prepared by Art Effects. One second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve application twenty five twenty one. Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll go ahead with the vote. Um, all in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. The motion, uh, the application twenty five twenty one is approved unanimously. So, uh I suspect they'll be glad to hear that. Okay, moving on to the
Again. Uh, ZC twenty five twenty two at six nineteen Hot Meadow Street, B P S Periodontics. For for this is the uh this is the debt, the the this kind of second dentist office on site being constructed or converted from, it was a law office, and it's a small, it was a
Yeah.
So, uh, six there, it's under construction right now. I think they're moving pretty fast. I hope to be open soon. Um, we're gonna talk tonight just about the freestanding sign because the wall sign was not recommended favorably by the design review committee this evening, and and they asked the applicant to come back with, um some some additional items. I mean, Brittany was there, I wasn't there.
Right.
Um, they asked them to uh to provide some additional information. So this is just the wall sign. I should be just the just the what did I say? Freestanding sign.
Freestanding sign, yeah.
So freestanding sign is gonna be out front over at Hot Meadow.
So just to be clear
It looks nice.
Application twenty five twenty two no longer includes a wall sign.
Well, I think we're gonna bring it to you in two parts. I think is the best way to do it as opposed to waiting.
It's it's fine with me. I just want, so it'll come back in the form of a
Wall.
another application.
Yeah, it 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 actually, it 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 may not even come back to you because you typically only approve the freestanding sign as part of the site plan review. You don't you don't really, you don't normally approve the smaller signs. We just bring them as a package because they're together. Um, so it may or may not return to you unless you really want to see it. So
Not to your judgment. We think we're pretty busy as it is.
So this sign, this is the this is the freestanding sign that the design review board recommended favorably to, so kind of nice graphics. I think it's there.
Yeah, that's good.
Yes.
Up up lighting.
The uplight, is that like only during hours of operation or?
So that was one suggestion by the uh design review board, is that they provide a lighting schedule and that it be either dimmed or turned off um at at night, either when they close or at a certain certain time of night.
They're gonna do that.
Yep.
Okay.
Super.
So would we include that in the motion if we approve?
Yeah, I would. I would.
Yep, yes.
What is the change or objection for the other side?
So
Brittany, go ahead, yeah.
So they did not, a- as you can see, they did not provide what the what the what the sighting will look like on the building.
Right, so
And uh, the previous site plan, it was it was vertical sighting, which they were worried would kind of distort the image of the sign.
Okay.
Um, also
So they wanted to see a new, an elevation that showed the building is
Yes, exactly. And they al- yeah, they questioned the gooseneck lighting color. There's just, there was, there was a few unknowns, um, that weren't addressed.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I understand that.
So ju- have they decided what the sighting will look like?
They, we had a rendering of what the sighting would look like, so we were gonna ask them to confirm that and to bring to bring that image back with the sign.
Yeah, they received architectural and site plan approval from 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 this body.
Right.
So
We don't have to, that's, no, we don't have to talk about this part, right? Because we're not
And it's No. No, you don't, but just it's nice to, you know, I mean
Yeah.
I mean, it's just kind of a nuance of the regulation, right?
Yes.
Which is, we don't normally bring that to you.
Right.
Just but in this case, look, it's hard to separate. But in this case, we would recommend you approve the freestanding sign only.
Okay.
With the additional condition on them submitting a a a timing.
Okay, it's your turn.
As I say, you haven't done anything yet today.
Yeah, you have to answer it, but you get complicated one.
Here, just just a moment though. Let me just be clear. What what is the additional condition?
Yeah.
The additional uh condition is for the applicant to provide a lighting schedule um with the recommendation that lights be dimmed or turned off at a certain time. Either at closing of office or it's it's usually ten P M. I think with others we've said, but it's, you know, we're gonna ask the applicant what their preferences and then if you'd That would be subject to approval by by staff.
Yes.
Okay. Um, I move that the zoning commission approves application ZC twenty five dash twenty two of P R Properties owner Jesse Serantino applicant for a permit to install one ten and a half square foot freestanding sign. Please strike the other sign from the motion. For B P S Periodontics at six nineteen Hot Meadow Street. The project shall be developed in according to the sign plan titled B P S Periodontics um dated August twentieth, twenty twenty five by Sign Pro. And has the condition that the lighting provided where the sign have a schedule and is operated during business hours or dimmed thereafter.
Being known with by the staff. Second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve of application twenty five twenty two. Uh, are there any other questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll go ahead with the vote. All in say, all in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. And those opposed nay. Um, hearing no nays, then the motion passes, uh the application passes unanimously, application twenty five twenty two passes unanimously. So um this their signs all set and um. I hope they speed it up on giving the siding on that building, I got driven by there a lot, yeah. Okay, so for the next order of business. Oh. We need to have a discussion about application twenty five seventeen um which has to do, it's the town of Simsbury owner Brittany McGilpin applicant for text amendment to create a new zoning regulation related to dark sky lighting the Simsbury zoning regulations Hartford Simsbury Form Based Code and the Simsbury Center Code. Um, Brittany, do you wanna?
Yep.
So what so what what we what Brittany thought we would do tonight, since she's since she's shepherded this the whole the whole way with is is we've introduced this to you, you got you had a presentation from Marjorie Winters, Brittany walk walk you through the kind of the big picture stuff. She's gonna she's gonna gonna do three or four slides on what, I mean, it's not that complicated in order, it's it's fairly short, she's gonna walk you through each of those sections. Uh, and 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 certainly ask for questions at any at 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 any point, and then what we'll ask you to do at the end is to is to consider setting a public hearing date. I mean, that's what we think we're there, so go ahead Brittany, this is all you.
So tonight I just wanna go over a high level summary of the proposed text amendment, uh this is in preparation for a public hearing, which is required for text amendments. As you know, the twenty twenty four P O C D did emphasize incorporating dark sky lighting. It was specifically found in chapter uh titled maintain and enhance compute uh community ambience uh page forty nine if you wanted to take a look. The regulation would apply to new uh proposed development uh for public and for private properties uh that require site plan applications. Um, and also that includes uh amendments to changing our new outdoor lighting fixtures. This does not apply to single family residential homes or signage as of yet. Uh, the the text amendment would be a new section, section eleven in the zoning regulations called outdoor lighting standards. Uh, we also would update the section seventeen point four, which is our definitions, and it would be all the lighting uh terminology would be grouped into one section, just kind of what we do for other like flood zone, things like that, so it's it's easy for the user. And also make sure that the Simsbury Center Code and the other it's uh Form Based Code uh directs the lighting requirements to this section. So before starting to draft a regulation, I I looked at a number of Connecticut towns um and what their outdoor lighting regulations look like. This is the this list is ones that I found that incorporated dark sky principles. Um, I'm sure there are more, but these are the ones that I noted here, um, the different towns incorporated, um, it was a range of length of ordinance as well as technicality. For example, the town of Windsor has a fifteen page outdoor lighting ordinance um as opposed to Kent Canton and Avon, which have half a page to a page of more general requirements. I also reviewed the lights out Connecticut model outdoor lighting regulations for Connecticut, tried to craft Simsbury's um regulation with a balance of usability as well as making sure that it did have those environmental and dark sky elements to it. So the first section that this uh the regulation talks about is targeted light, uh this is a pretty common dark sky um principle, many might be familiar with it, so it's to ensure that dark that light is downward facing with no uplight, so that this this uh graphic isn't gonna be is gonna be included, I think it show clearly what uplighting means, um, it's really supposed to be for an intended area. So the dark the regulation requires um certain approved lighting fixtures as well, so this and this just kind of shows a gradual description of no cutoff to full cutoff. Second section talks about light trespass, um similar to target lighting, this just prevents glare and light trespass onto a budding properties. So the regulation tries to achieve this by limiting uh what's allowed the loud lighting fixtures, prohibit certain other types of fixtures. It provides requirements for lighting pole heights as well as canopy lighting. Also discuss lighting intensity measured at grade, um you probably are familiar with, this is a photometric plan that many developers for these kind uh maybe more major developments provide. It shows the foot candles of all the lighting fixtures um and what the measurements are, we've kind of looked to the property lines to make sure that they're minimal zero point one. So requirement of that stated in the regulation is to provide a photometric plan with this information which includes the light fixture plus the lamp, location of fixtures and or poles and height of any poles. While we do require while we do receive this from many applicants, it's currently not a requirement, it's just kind of an ask on on staff's part. We also talk about lighting control, which is more the automatic shut off and the dimming capabilities. We break it up into nonessential outdoor lighting sources um as well as essential outdoor lighting requirements. And then lighting fixtures, we have a list of what would be approved, also what's prohibited, um also talking about sources, for example, making sure that we if you use L E D lighting if the color temperature is three thousand or less, there's also a category of lighting that's exempt from this regulation. This includes critical lighting such as safety lighting for police department, fire department, etc. Short term lighting, flagpole lighting with certain restrictions, traditional seasonal lighting and portable sport event lighting. So the next steps uh would be this to schedule the public hearing, we had a suggested date of October sixth or the twentieth, make sure we meet all, we have to make sure we meet all the noticing requirement. We are scheduled to uh go to the planning commission on September ninth as part of the referral process.
I'm with you.
September ninth.
We've sent this to um the chairman of commerce. We've sent it to uh Main Street as part of um that kind of outreach to to as this will primarily affect business owners with new projects, and that's that's who it's going to affect. Um, and so we certainly we certainly uh wanted to let them know, I mean, additional regulation um and I haven't had, we haven't had full feedback yet, but we'll make sure we report that to you at the time of whenever you set your public hearing.
Have you had? Get any feedback?
No.
Oh. Interesting.
Not outside the committee.
Okay.
And Brittany, did you run this by Marjorie Winters?
So.
Yes, oh, I've been working with Marjorie the whole time, yeah.
Oh, this is. So this, if you remember, this this really emanated out of the conservation commission.
We are.
Yeah, it's kind of where it came from, so.
I'll make sure that she was okay with that.
Right.
Marjorie is. Brittany is.
Yes.
Very close.
Okay, she's good with this, thank you.
Okay, so on the question of a public hearing date. Does anybody have?
I like the twentieth. I do, oh, I'm not here the sixth, I'm traveling for work, so I would vote for the twentieth based on that solely, but. Do it works for everybody.
Now, you need publication, so to how much advance? How does you need?
So we we have already um filed the 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 um the longest requirement with the the CROG already, so we've met our thirty days already with them, so it's two weeks typically.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and then the 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 reason we suggested October sixth or October twentieth, obviously we kind of we wanna keep this moving, um but the 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 chairman and the vice chairman and I, as part of one of your briefing items talked about getting presentations from the yeah zoning update submission finalists for October sixth, though I I don't know how busy that meeting will get.
So then let's do the twentieth.
No. Yeah. I like the twentieth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, okay, great.
Well, unless there's any merit to doing like versus to the October sixth for dark skies and then the twentieth for the the other gang. It gives them longer to adjust their staffing and whatever they're wanting they might wanna do because it's not a convenient date, but if we're only offering one date to come and be in front of us, I don't think anybody's gonna say no, but it does just provide a little bit more for those finalists. If we said, we're offering the opportunity to come on October twentieth. There's no other date, if you don't come on October twentieth, uh you're out.
I mean, today's September third, they have a full month.
Right, exactly.
I would say.
It's not the same when you say October sixth, it's a little bit, a little bit shorter, but a couple weeks.
Yeah, yeah, I would prefer that we move expeditiously on the uh zoning rewrite and do that on the sixth and then delay this until the twentieth.
I would agree with you, Tony.
Yeah.
And anybody who says they can't make it on October sixes.
I mean, if 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 we get if I get some sort of feedback from the, but we haven't we haven't we haven't noticed any of the folks that the staff is recommending to come in to get presentation, we haven't told them what the date is yet, because I wanted to have this conversation tonight. Uh, so if all three of them, we're gonna recommend three to you, if all three of them say we can't make it on the sixth, I I guess we'd have to reconsider, but.
Have you chosen three out of the six?
We have.
Which ones?
We're gonna have that conversation i- in a moment.
It's later in the meeting.
Mr. Chair, are we in agreement for October twentieth?
Uh. I think there was a consensus use October twentieth for the uh dark skies and October sixth for the.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah.
Is he including it, it's preliminary, look.
Yeah, I don't think you need to take action, we'll just that's we'll we'll plan to agendize this item for that evening on the twentieth.
Sounds cool, thank you for your work on this, Brittany. Yeah.
Yeah.
This is so great.
Do we need a vote on setting the date?
I don't I don't think you do, I I no, it's kind of we 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 own that process, so we.
Good. Okay, thank you Brittany.
Of course.
Um. It's your list, George.
Yeah, I do have, so yeah, okay, um.
The next one.
Alright, so the first thing is in front of you, you have a town Simsbury completed in pipeline development project matrix spreadsheet. And I provided it to you because we were asked to put this to guest, everyone's asked to put this together for the uh board of finance committee several weeks ago, and so uh I mean, I I I we we tend to keep kind of an ongoing a running list, a development project list, um development completed, development under construction, development kind of what we call pipeline, meaning approved, but not entitled, but not not gone to construction yet. Um, but we worked, um, the board of finance asked us to include things like uh student generation and population and kind of assumptions on real estate assessment uh as a way to kind of manage grand list expectation and those kinds of things, so so we've done that and I I assume like this is a for your information, uh I mean, if I'm showing it to the finance committee, I'll show it to the to the to the zoning commission because you guys have been involved in many of these projects and it's a good kind of tickler as to what's going on in the community and what might be upcoming. So so that's what it is, it's a um it is i- i- it's a matrix that we update kind of if every couple of months or a quarter. And I'm happy to answer any questions about it, but this is just kind of data that we like to have and keep and share with you.
Okay, so I assume the typical single family home, you're assuming two and a half people and one student. And so.
Okay.
Across the board, where do you get this from, is it?
Yes. So that so that that is um that is that's based on scholarly research, the the um planners have accepted a study by Rutgers, which is Rutgers student generation study that was originally done in two thousand and six, it's been updated and uh it is a study that 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 surveyed every single like residential structure in the state of New Jersey and developed these numbers and these numbers have come to be accepted, so one student per single family household, point one two for multi-family households and uh those numbers work and they're 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 largely accepted.
But do they reflect actual data based on the board of ed collecting information on?
Almost identically.
Does it?
Yeah, our the town, the town's numbers and student generation, which the which the the board of uh the with the school board and their staff keep um detailed data on, they know exactly how many students are generated by Aspen Green, they know how many students are generated by uh by by development and um know with within a margin of error, eh they they we we generate numbers identical to the Rutgers study.
I'm surprised the numbers are that low, but that's good to know.
I have a question, um, so obviously the finance committee, uh every every year they get faced, they face a face with a deficit and they have to work their magic to to fill that gap. Do you remember off the top of your head about what was the gap they were trying to fill for this most recent budget?
Oh, I don't.
No?
I don't.
Was it about a million and a half dollars?
I don't, I don't. I don't, I don't, I don't know. One, I'm not exactly sure what you're asking. And two, I I I two, I can take the question and I would and I would ask the the finance director.
Just say it. Yeah, yeah, uh yeah, so it it just I I think this is really great to see, um, cause you you hear about these numbers, but seeing it all together like this, it really it it really um keeps good perspective on this. I mean, I I have to, I one of these is just is burning my corneas because I I can't stop looking at it.
It tells.
So so much hay was made over forty eight multifamily units in vessel. It is gonna contribute almost a quarter million dollars to our grand list and provide two students to our schools which by the way seems like too many because I think it's all single family if I'm not mistaken, so or a single bedroom.
No.
I think there are forty five singles and three.
Three.
Yeah.
Or okay, sure, so at at two, so a a similarly sized property, Raising Canes, less than half of that value.
Two bedrooms.
Uh, even if you consider the single family home that used to be there and subtracted from there, none of these single family homes are more than twenty grand a year, so.
It's also not built yet, you know.
It's also not built yet.
Yeah, I mean, it's supposed to be, but it isn't, so there's that.
Sure.
Raising Canes, zero students for Raising Canes, look at that, we're already collecting money on that.
All all. That's true. But a a so a single family home, for instance, provides at most twenty thousand and provides a student and takes up the same amount of our limited space. Um, this uh Luminary Apartments, which man, that's how long was that under construction? Since.
Oh, no, they just got they just got their first set of permits on at the end of last year.
Yeah, they got approved five years ago.
Yes, yeah.
Approved five years ago, I was gonna say excited, I'm still there.
Yeah.
My first pitch was late late twenty four, they got their first building.
Yeah, yeah.
It doesn't start.
Yeah, but almost almost a million dollars. Uh Hartford South, almost a million and a half, McLean, half a million. If if we're gonna be good response, if we're gonna be good stewards of the taxpayers' money, these numbers have to be a part of that conversation. That's that's my soapbox.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Great.
Now, does anybody else wanna say anything?
I, on that topic, but on um on the this, where was twelve sixty three Hot Meadow, this hotel?
Oh, well, so that that is the 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 that is the 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 fifty six acres or forty nine acres or whatever it is between uh Big Y and the and the International Skating Center and Dorset Crossing. We did a rezoning on that property six months ago, and I think they came in and did a.
It's supposed to be like that, like like.
Exhibition.
They did a presentation.
Mix thing, you know, like the shops.
Yeah.
Okay, I I don't recall the.
You need to take.
I don't think that was part of it.
Horses. Horses wasn't like it's hot, no, it's a wagon fort.
I never remember hotel.
That was part of it.
Oh.
It was part of the hotel.
They, yeah, there was like a ba- a back section that they were flopping off and then they were creating a village, that like little whatever.
Yeah.
Whatever you say.
It's my.
Yeah.
It's space.
The winter, the winter village.
But north of the.
Team to.
I think the village is.
Okay, now I just wanted to know what the patient was, that's all, that's all.
Thanks for answering.
Yeah, hey, just so everybody knows, that 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 address isn't one two six three, it's one.
Three seven five.
Yeah, it's. Agner is one two six three.
The skating center is.
It's like thirteen ninety.
Yeah.
So it's.
I mean, somebody has an address.
Yeah, it doesn't have an address.
Yeah, yeah, so sorry about that, I'll fix that.
Okay.
That's what could be.
Could you tell us about the solar project?
The space would be a driveway to the International Skating Center.
If we're if we're done with my if we're done with my, oh, that it is on there.
Okay, that's.
It sounds like.
Some of us are done with it.
It's actually on the next, it's the next briefing item.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
Well, look, what's what's.
Well, well, I I thought this.
Travically.
Well, I know, I know where that's from.
The the to echo what Tucker said that having the data helps us answer questions when people out in public are saying, oh, look at all these apartments and look at all the students we're getting, and I and then say, well, look at the data and. when people out in public are saying, oh, look at all these apartments and look at all the students we're getting and I and then say, well, look at the data doesn't look quite so bad, you know? So it it's helpful to have this. And so Cambridge, the the Castor Bridge is part of Dorset Crossing?
It is.
Part of that complex.
Okay.
It is.
I I mean.
Get different homes.
Where are they putting the?
They're not building them yet.
What's the what's the question? So there are two, there are due, there are two
Space.
At the rear.
residential land bays at Dorset Crossing. One is um all the way to to the west, so past the the Ojekian project, past the.
Sorry, she's done with you.
Past the existing, so if you go up and around, you go you go pad go around the circle, you go up and around to the left, there's a land bay there
Up around there.
that has permitted seventy two multifamily units and then in front.
Similar looking to what's already there.
Say that now.
Similar design to what's already.
Well, it was approved years ago, I I think there's some interest in in I mean in folks walked away from it, so I don't exact
Not.
I suspect it'll come in with some changes eh when it does come in, but but there's no way to know.
So it was approved but never built.
Correct, approved but never built, same thing in the front land bay, approved but never built, there's another there's seventy two units that were approved by this commission two summers ago, there were as I said seventy two units, three three or four units, three story and I think those were more similar or planned as more similar to the existing ones.
Just projecting out to twenty thirty or so.
But again, approved but not.
Right, okay, got it.
Not constructed. Anything else?
Well, I would just, you know, I'm not trying to dampen enthusiasm for seeing more money come in through the real estate at Simsbury represents, but be aware. It's not that simple. Now. Next item George.
Yeah, I don't know if I have a picture.
Are you wanting to nod roads?
I am, I am. I am. So just if if you don't mind, just give me one second to um see if I can't get a picture of it, so there so we have uh been alerted to a an application that is going to be filed with the Connecticut Siting Council of a approximately twenty acre piece of one forty Nod Road, which is where the Taka Mountain Collective is, where the old golf course was, where the frisbee frisbee stuff is uh.
Are they gonna?
Part of that parcel that used to be golf.
Yeah, actually i- if everybody just let me let me bring it up. Um why can't I find application app? Uh which might not, that's why. I would.
嗯, that's why I was just calling.
Yeah, I put it in submitted apps. This is the one thing I didn't prep for tonight, I apologize.
I got your book.
I got that. Thank you.
You were just looking for this somewhere.
I have it, I have it, I I have it.
It is.
I don't have it.
Well, the address is.
I know, but I don't know where I saved it now, everyone. So it is, so it's an application for a a a a a s- a a solar facility at that location.
Which side of Nod Road, the riverside or the up?
So it's going to be on the uh the ridge side. Yeah, I I don't have a picture. I don't know where I put it. Um so it's uh the twenty acres on the north side would be the nor- you know, kind of that northeast side. And um it is so so solar farm solar solar projects, if you if you if you don't remember, um if if they are over uh you know, a certain megawatt, which this is, it is only reviewed by the Connecticut siting council, there's no local land use review.
Oh.
Not for environmental or for zoning.
But we did have say in the current one, we have in Simsbury about landscaping, fence, all that kind of safety.
So as part of that process, um the town made recommendations that were accepted conditionally, those tho- 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 those suggestions, so uh I think we'll have that bite at the apple once it is the process hasn't even started, they've come in, they briefed the town manager, they briefed me, haven't they briefed anybody else, so but but it is public, they
Got it.
you know, filed information already with the state, so it is there and it's my job to tell you, it's coming, so.
Are you gonna be removing trees in order to have this array?
Uh So the they'll be I understand they'll have to they they will they will clear the existing area, but there as I understand it now, it is not stretching into the kind of the core forest on ridge line, it would be removing evergreens and stuff that were part of the golf course.
Yeah, so it's going on what used to be a golf course.
Yes, on both sides of the road.
Yes. Are what used to be a golf.
But it's on the ridge side.
He said the ridge side.
It's only on the it's only on the ridge side, only on the right side, inside is probably.
Yeah. So we'll see the panels when you drive down.
Yeah.
And they will be oriented southwest for maximum exposure.
Sure.
And so as we drive down the
I see, that's what I just don't know.
road, I assume it's to, you know, they'll be fairly visible.
I have. I have the email, it has a good.
As opposed to hitting behind the building
I like I could have my emails.
up the hill.
I have it in my emails now that I I I went through all that.
So you have a right plan.
Oh shit.
So nice to be George.
Oh.
Alright, we'll show it to you, ah it's gonna make me do it. Hang on.
Every time, I swear to God, it's like ten minutes to get into any of them, it's like.
I know.
Oh, yeah.
Open your help pad, I can't.
You're on vacation.
I I get noise just so much, it's like please open your help pad, I'm like I'm trying to get it.
No.
Just take a second.
So is this being fed into any particular?
No.
Grand design.
Just just the big avant garde grid or wherever, no, we're just.
So it's the avant garde, avant grid.
Avant grid.
I think so. Avent grid.
Yeah.
Avent grid? Um do we know? Well, I'll just wait for you to.
Yeah, you know, we're we spend time together, it's okay.
So is it the same basic grid as our other solar farm? Or is it different?
Well, we're gonna have to replace that wind farm somehow, that offshore.
Unless the people might even be able to get the.
Look at us.
After or stood handed.
Look at us.
Look at us, all set, alright.
There we go.
So the best way to look at this, yeah, it's twenty eight acres, you think so here is here's the parking lot.
Oh my God.
The Taka uh you know, collective building et cetera here, so it's uh.
Alright, that's all, is that?
Tilt to the right.
So then there's a you know, if you're if you're sitting at the picnic tables, having a pint back here, that's the pond that you see directly behind
Yeah.
that area.
Oh. So they're using area that's now frisbee.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
What happens to that, must go right up against the pond.
Oh, well, the frisbee thing is just a couple of poles.
The six, seven, I don't know what happens to that.
So that when you're driving, you don't hit in the face.
So and I you know, I I I'm sure that the Board of Selectmen will have continued briefings on this and um you know, once a a formal application is 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 set with the with the state, then they they set a hearing process or a a a process that doesn't have hearings
Those are the same.
the town can can make a decision on on how it wants to intervene or participate or otherwise uh submit comments.
But we don't have, we can't, we don't have a say in in saying, nope, like it's happening, we just have the option to
you know, staff has generated some.
you know, offer comments as to how it happens.
So.
You wouldn't have to read it, so they could just know, they have no obligation to to serve.
I mean, I I so we when you say we is the zoning commission, yes, you absolutely have no role in the review or oversight of this.
Okay.
But the the town can make a decision on what level of kind of antagonistic position it wants to take
But the town also really.
and but you know, either the town can support it, it can be it can oppose it, it can um support, you know, oppose it with recommend, I mean, there's a million ways that the town can ultimately decide to participate in this and I certainly don't have any inkling on on what what the proper course of action is at this point.
Uh two questions, um I think you might have answered the first one, but I just wanna ask it again, so revenue from this.
But property tax only.
Okay.
Property tax only.
Um and where does this solar energy get distributed?
It goes to the grid.
Mm-hmm.
No, so it's it's property tax only, presumably the property is much more valuable with solar panels on it than as an abandoned golf course.
It's not abandoned.
I would I would I would say that that's probably true. I think we had an est- there's an estimate on your sheet, I think.
Oh.
Is there a problem?
I think there is.
No, I I see a blank.
No, okay, there you go.
Yeah.
Actually no.
Yeah, we we got this on late, so you know, those and and this is, you know, way out of my lane right now, I mean my understanding of 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 solar projects in general, they 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 tend to have their own negotiated property tax agreement.
So George, have you heard of the neighbors have started uh organizing against, haven't heard?
Have not, no sir.
And we don't have a timeline.
They can break out those old save notes.
I we we've been told that the filing will occur in the fall.
No, it's not.
I see.
Yeah.
That's where we are, and that's usually then a four to six month approval process.
How much?
Four to six is what I understand.
No. Do the owners of Ta- well, Taka Mountain Collective is just a is a a tenant, they don't own the property, is that right?
The owners are S- a Simsbury Real Estate LLC or something like that.
Okay, but so but so this is part of that property that they own, is okay.
It is, it is, there's a yeah, so so this this solar farm, they they would be leases.
Yeah.
Of 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 the.
Oh, got it, right.
Right.
So you're pretty certain this is going to move ahead?
Y- yes.
Hmm.
And once they file, the uh you know, all the information is is stored on a very easy to use website at that state level. All that stuff is there for review.
We're sure it couldn't be affordable housing instead?
You just stir the pot and cook in the air.
That's rhetorical.
So the amount of power could generate X number of houses, do we have information?
That I'm sure that that information will be available, I don't have that information.
Yeah.
I'm sure it will be.
And the assessor will have to figure out how to or are we keeping the land value the same?
That those questions are not for me. Not for me.
I can't imagine.
Good questions, good questions, but not for me.
Third party review.
So I'll keep you updated, you know, as it goes along, it's a sure.
Thanks George, thanks George.
Yep. Okay, two uh um two final ones, one one kind of simple and and then well, they're both very simple. So the first I just wanted to uh so staff made a decision to get ahead of the third party review complex application um issue, really, you know, this issue of um when and where should we ask for a third party expert as part of a complex application?
Yeah, yeah.
Whether it's uh traffic impact or environmental impact or you know, site plan and engineering impacts you know, if you think about this, this kind of came up at the end of the vessel or the the Hartford South pro- process.
Yeah, but it feels like by the time you need it, you it's too late, yes.
So. Right, so what so what we have done, and we haven't done it yet cuz we we just we just received submissions last week is we um with Brittany's help, we went and we did an RFQ, a request for qualifications for general engineering expertise, so stormwater, traffic, all that kind of stuff. And then a a second RFQ for wetlands and environmental consultant, this you you this this body thinks of that third party review expertise, but wetlands folks ask for it, you know, it's always on their mind, particularly for complex applications, so we what we have done is um we put an RFQ out and staff is going to enter into contracts with two or three of each of those submissions.
Right.
So that when the zoning commission says we want a traffic consultant to review this traffic study, cuz it's your job to do that, it's not ours.
Mm-hmm.
Um we'll have people in house already and we we all will do then is to say, Thomas, we'll just say, here's the scope, give us a price.
And they're giving you some sort of, when you say you're entering into contract, that's based on.
It's a it's an on.
Pricing contract, no?
So it's not, it's an on-call contract.
Okay.
It's an on-call contract, um.
Alright, like a retainer?
Yeah, well, we don't, we just say you're on call, you're on call, so if we need you, we'll.
Yeah. Okay. You just limited, you just created a shortlist of people that we can go to.
Create a shortlist, it's exactly what we've done.
And you got pricing in order to do that or only qualifications in order to do that?
No, only qualifications, so what
Okay.
you can't get pricing because it's gonna be a project by project review, it's gonna be how we how how do we define what this body wants to review.
Right.
Right, I mean, there's a difference between reviewing the applicant's traffic study and somebody doing their own counts and doing that kind of thing, so it's just different, um.
Right. How we need them.
So we we will be able to turn around a scope very quickly, you know, as opposed to six weeks, we'll do it in four days
Down to the. Right.
and we'll have, again, remember how this works, is that these complex applications are pay, the the third party review is paid for by the applicant.
Yeah.
And has to be approved by the Board of Selectmen, so it you know, may become kind of a low price anyway at that point, but we'll ask, we'll ask for two or three proposals
Okay.
from our in-house on-call folks, so we'll be ready to go.
That's a great idea.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
I think it's a good idea.
Great, yeah, keep doing that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think it'll put us in a much better position.
We've needed it.
Yes.
Yeah.
And is there a defin- an understood definition of complex projects?
So what if it's.
There is, there is, for the zoning commission, it's a hundred thousand spaces not hundred thousand spaces, a hundred thousand square feet and a hundred parking spaces. For the wetlands commission, there's not, it is there is there is no um minimum or maximum, but it's in the it's in the town code, it's not in the zoning ordinance, you find it in the code of ordinances.
So wouldn't it be similar to lawyer that's saying I charge X amount per hour for my service?
So so we so i- it is in fact a little bit like that, it will probably it will be an hourly, we have the hourly sheets that were part of the submission. They're all the same, I mean, they're all in the same ballpark, but yeah, it but it it will it will I mean, my preference is going to be kind of a maximum not to exceed kind of contract, because we have to let the applicant what they have, know what they have to pay. So it'll be clear what we're asking a third party reviewer to do, again, third party reviewers isn't really creating their own, say, they are they are reviewing and providing comment on on an applicant's submission. You know, you kind of use them as your expert, if 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 our town staff doesn't have capacity or expertise.
Okay, good.
So that I think that that'll be good, I don't, you know.
I know, that's great.
Figure out when you use it, well, maybe you'll use it.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so the uh the final item is uh is is just an update on your zoning regulation, uh update and 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 comprehensive rewrite. If you uh if you remember, we had briefed you last month on kind of guidance from uh the chairman and the vice chairman on having um having staff interview and review the the submissions and then trying to take the submissions to finalist for 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 your final review and decision making. So staff has done that, we had six submissions. Um and 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 when I say staff, um how did you say staff? Three staff members reviewed the submissions and scored them based on uh experience team, uh um
I see.
s- similar applications price approach to the project, um and so, you know, we're we are we are prepared to 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 make that recommendation to you and then schedule finalist for presentation to you with questions and answers on October as we said, October sixth.
So I looked at them all, you know, one thoroughly and I said, alright, I just sort of quickly went through the others, so the last one on the list was way over price beyond what you budgeted, so.
We would not be recommending that firm.
Exactly, and then there was another one that in my opinion seemed to focus more on economic development and other kinds of projects and I forget the name of exactly who's who. Uh I have my I left my notes at home, um so can you tell us which three you?
Well, that's interesting, I mean, it it's um we we.
And one was much lower price.
So we haven't alert, we haven't alerted any of the firms to to their status, so.
Sorry, my question.
Um it.
So you don't wanna.
They'll let you.
So so I would prefer not to do that, I would prefer to I would prefer, I mean, and unless you wanna have a debate and 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 not be satisfied with
Yeah.
Letting it.
No, 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 no.
with our recommendation, which again is is fine, but my kind of marching. No recommendation, which again is, is fine, but my kind of marching orders were.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
For staff to to kind of cut them in half.
Yes.
Fine, you didn't have to get six presentations.
Thank you.
And then they.
And I think we've done a, I think we've done a decent job.
And one of them had a much lower price, because they've already been in town and done some projects and probably.
I'm sure you have some draft.
Yeah. I'm, I'm quite frankly, less worried about about the price, and we've got a budget of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, we'll use all of that probably, but.
Yeah.
There was one that was almost fifty thousand dollars more and and so, I don't think that's a forty thousand more than 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 our budget, than our, than our budget, so.
Well, and then there was.
So we're prepared to do that, and and I, what 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 we'll do, what we would, what we would normally do is we, staff will, um. Will provide a memo, the RFPs, and uh, the, our scoring matrix to you for um, as part of our review.
Right, thank you.
And then we, and if that's, if that is okay with this body, then, you know, we will invite everybody for October sixth.
Yes, that's great. Yeah, thanks again for the efforts on that. Yeah, thank you for getting the and weeding it down for us.
Not everybody, just the three.
Three, I'm sorry, the three.
Appreciate it, yeah, the three, we're good.
The three.
Three, and 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 without objection, unless you have any other, I mean, it's sometimes it's a little hard to wrangle those nights, so, I mean, I would, I would, I would schedule. I would schedule the three in forty-five minute blocks, but say that it's, you know, tw- twenty-minute presentation and a, and ten-minute to fifteen-minute question and answer. That way, there's a little bit, so it's, you know, it's 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 a full hour and a half, it'll end up being a decent night, I'd like to start at six. Otherwise, you'll be here through nine, for sure. I, un- un- unless it's a real problem for everybody. Let me know.
That's good.
Okay. Thank you.
I I don't have a problem, I don't, personally, I don't care if it's two hours a firm.
Okay, yeah, okay.
We're making a big decision here, and you're only gonna get twenty-five minutes in front of each one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And for those of us who have never met these people, know, not as much as we should know about the work detail. Um, that's a heavy load, I mean, to to think that we're gonna make an important decision on that kind of a connection. It's always been my experience in the selection process that more encounters produce a separation, a natural separation, the better. Uh, candidates look better and the weaker ones look weaker, I'm not suggesting that we can't do this in twenty-minute interviews, but twenty-five minutes, good.
I I would, I would always say that you should have your options open, and if. After you've met with the three finalists, if you wanted to bring back, if you wanted to do it again on a different night and ask different questions, yeah. You you, I I would say you are under no pressure to make some decision on October sixth, unless unless you wanted to. And and we can always schedule addition time or however however you want to manage it.
I I'm concerned that we we don't want to overstate what we, I think we can accomplish that night, so we're gonna create pressures for ourselves that. Aren't needed, um, implying that we can make a selection decision on October sixth.
Well, now now we know that we can come back to the.
Yeah, you, yeah, you're under no pressure to do that.
I think hearing.
I, what I'm, I I'm just.
It's beneficial.
Yeah, I do too, to compare.
Just to compare and and have it fresh in your minds.
Yep.
I I'm sorry, I can't, I'm just talking.
Hearing from the three, she said, in one night is beneficial, because you can compare.
Yeah.
Yes.
I got that, is, the in- interview isn't the only factor that goes into the decision.
No, yeah.
You got a submission, you have a full submission.
They have a submission, we have um, professionals who've looked at these submissions and can provide recommendations, so interview is just one of several elements we'll be considering.
Yes.
Sure. Absolutely.
So, the protocol, if you have A, B, C coming in, does A come in and B and C sit down in the hall or somewhere special?
That's typically the protocol, although it is a public meeting, we can't do this book behind closed doors, they they can certainly sit in the audience, but.
Yeah.
The consultants tend not to do that.
No.
No, they they would wait, they would wait in the hall, we would put a little, probably, probably a little waiting area for them.
They have their own.
So six o'clock on October sixth, that's the plan.
Yeah, yeah, so we, after that, that's a special meeting for the time, is that okay?
This is a lot tonight, thank you.
It's a lot, well, this meeting's always a lot, after the kind of the break, so. We'll have a busy fall.
Oh, I I, one of the thing that I I neglected when we were looking at uh. An earlier segment of your reports, I'm I'm aware, because I drive by there so frequently, Vessel. Is working on their site again, are they permitted now to do? They've satisfied all the national engineering standards, et cetera, et cetera, and they're permitted to be doing what, could you tell us that?
I can't.
You can or you can't?
I can, yes, I can, of course I can, um, I'm framing my thoughts. Vessel has a foundation-only permit. So they are permitted to do work related to the foundation-only permit, as well as site work and those kinds of things. They do not have fill build, the full building permit for other trades in framing and plumbing and mechanical and electrical. They are still working with town building official and the town fire marshal, and the state building official and the state fire marshal to address. Uh, building code design solutions that yet to meet the state building code.
So nothing has changed as far as their permitting status.
That's correct.
You can't really, it's not easy driving by to see what they're doing, but it's obvious, they're there, the gates open, there's trucks in there, yeah.
I'll buy the trail, yeah.
By the trail, you can see more.
I know.
I've been by the trail many times.
You think we are making some progress, but.
Given this and list, I forget there are. Proposal.
They do not have a full building permit yet.
Thank you. Okay, and then on the, the Wagner Ford property, it was Starbucks that that's not going forward and Chipotle that's going forward?
That's correct.
Okay, I thought I had, it was the other way around, and then obviously, the site that's being worked at is the Chipotle one.
Yes.
Okay. Good.
I have nothing else to report.
I will move up your turn.
I have a second though.
So we have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting, any other comments or questions? Hearing on the call for votes on the motion to adjourn the meeting, eight thirty, all in favor to say aye.
I.
I.
Also, close. Approve my man.
Sorry, I've had a long day.
For over forty years, SCM has been the voice of our town.
Bringing us together through local programming.
Education.